Regular meeting number six will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Pastor Green, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are pleased to have Reverend Benji Adukumi from Covenant Place Ministries Worldwide to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
While we are standing, let us bow down. I head for a word of prayer. Father, we thank you and give you praise for such a wonderful day you've given to us. I thank you for this nation of America, this great state of Ohio, and this beautiful city of Columbus, and all the leaders that are here today. Lord, to do business for this city. Give them understanding, wisdom, knowledge, insight, to be able to provide all the necessary input that this city need, that this city will become one of the greatest cities in this state of America. We thank you that you will help us. We thank you that you will continue to lead us in all that we do and protect this city. We thank you, and let everybody say amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to suspend the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications coming forward, the body?
Not this time.
Thank you. We'll go around the dais with announcements and resolutions from council members, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President. Just a reminder to everyone that the application for Accelerate Columbus program is now live and will remain open until all program spots are filled. Just as a refresher, this program is a free, city-funded, small-business training program focused on the topics such as marketing, website development, and small-business growth for all of our entrepreneurs and small businesses in the city. This year's program will have ten subprograms that small-business owners and entrepreneurs can choose from. To see the full list of these organizations, please visit the city's website at columbus.gov/accelerate. And the application can be found on the city's Small Biz Hub at cbus, small-b-i-z-hub.com. It can also be found also on my office's social media channels, and so really looking forward to seeing the work that will be done this year through Accelerate Columbus. So ahead.
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Dealkar.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Press Pro Tim. All right. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. On Wednesday, January 24th, the Ohio Senate voted to override Governor Dewine's veto of legislation to restrict municipalities' ability to regulate tobacco within its boundaries. This preemption legislation will go into effect ninety days from the date of its passage. After that date, previous ordinances passed by this council will no longer be in effect, including the flavored tobacco sales ban my colleagues and I unanimously passed in December 2022. Given the complexities and changing nature of this situation, I would like to invite Assistant Health Commissioner Anita Clark from Columbus Public Health to share more about what this means for Columbus businesses. Ms. Clark?
Good evening. Thank you so much, President Harden, Chair Favor, other members of council. Again, we are just so disappointed in this Senate's decision to veto the ban on flavored tobacco. We're going to continue to do this great work for eighty-five more days, and we'll be working with the city attorney's office for other options, but we believe in this work for our youth and also people of color. It's important for the health of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and if I heard you correctly, you did say that there could be some movement that could happen from the city attorney's office, so we will continue to make sure we keep the residents informed about any pertinent information as it unfolds. Thank you. Thank you, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, President Harden. I only have one resolution for this evening, and at this time, I'd like to invite Marion Dancy and Breann Ballard to the podium as I introduce it. Resolution 0015X-2024 to recognize the American Heart Association's centennial anniversary and to support the recognition of Friday, February 2nd, 2024, as National Wear Red Day and February as American Heart Month. For nearly a hundred years, the American Heart Association has been fighting heart disease and stroke and helping families and communities thrive. With over thirty-five million volunteers and supporters, this organization has rapidly grown in size and influence. The American Heart Association strives to remove barriers through work in communities, scientific research, and advocating for health policies, and they have proudly named their 2024 goal as Championing Health Equity for All, where they will work to eliminate barriers of social determinants of health, structural racism, and threats to rural health. Cardiovascular disease continues to be the leading cause of death in the United States and is the leading cause of death in women. In recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, this council proclaims Friday, February 2nd, 2024 as National Wear Red Day. We urge Columbus residents to show their support for women and the fight against heart disease by commemorating this day and wearing the color red. By increasing awareness, speaking out about heart disease, and empowering women to reduce their risk for cardiovascular diseases, we can save thousands of lives this year. Our colleagues here on council and I are pleased to honor the American Heart Association as they celebrate their centennial anniversary. That is one hundred years. That is a long time of doing this incredible work in the community, and so I would now like to turn the floor over to Breann and Marion to share a few words on behalf of the American Heart Association.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Green, Council President Harden, and all the members of council for recognizing February 2nd, 2024 as National Wear Red Day in the city of Columbus. As Councilmember Green said, cardiovascular disease continues to be the number-one killer of women, claiming more lives than all forms of cancer combined. Despite this staggering statistic, less than half of all women are aware that heart disease is their greatest health threat, making raising awareness through American Heart Month, National Wear Red Day, more important than ever. Since 2004, Go Red for Women has addressed the awareness and clinical care gaps of the number-one killer of women. As Go Red celebrates twenty years this year of making an impact on the cusp of our hundredth year, we continue to make bold moves to save lives and pioneer scientific discoveries. For two decades, we've been saving and improving women's lives by advancing equitable research and care, advocating for inclusive health policies, and raising awareness. But we haven't done it alone. We reach our goals by working with organizations and individuals who share our vision for better health, and today, the Go Red for Women community is stronger than ever. With that, it's my honor to introduce local heart survivor Marion Dancy to share her story. Thank you.
Good evening, President Harden, Councilmember Green, and members of council. I'm Marion Dancy. I just want to take a little bit of time to share my personal health journey. In 2019, I had to advocate for my own health. I was thirty-five years old, a busy mom, and a career woman, and I was six-and-a-half months postpartum. After having concerning symptoms, I went on a series of four appointments with four different medical professionals. At the first appointment, I heard, "You're young and healthy. Let's just keep an eye on your symptoms." I kept an eye on it, it became worse. I made a second appointment where I heard, "There's no concerning history. Keep an eye on it, there's a little virus going around, it should pass." It didn't pass. My symptoms became worse, and then I went to the ER. And at the ER, I received, unfortunately, a misdiagnosis. So finally, after weeks of my initial onset of symptoms, I made a desperate attempt at a fourth appointment. I was told at that appointment that I was in heart failure. The diagnosis was peri-partum cardiomyopathy, my heart condition caused by my pregnancy over six-and-a-half months prior. So with my diagnosis in hand, I began my journey to recovery, and today I stand before you a much healthier woman, and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful to the American Heart Association for all that they do to support and raise awareness for women like me. I am so thankful to be a survivor. Heart disease, as they mentioned, is the number-one killer of women. It can affect women at any age, stage, or walk of life. I am especially thankful for the education that I've received while volunteering with the American Heart Association. That education also saved my mother's life. She is now a survivor. Just two weeks ago, I received a phone call, and I realized right away from what I learned that she was experiencing a stroke. This is why awareness is so important. I am so thankful to acknowledge Friday, February 2nd, as National Wear Red Day. I thank you to the city of Columbus. As we gear up for Heart Month, spreading the word, you're making a difference. You're making a difference for women like me and like my mother, and also in the lives of the women that you love. So with my deepest gratitude and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all.
Thank you. Oh, here, I'm going to come and present this to you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for sharing your story with us this evening. As I often say, when we share our story, we give others permission to do the same, to educate themselves, arm themselves, and in the case of your mother, prepare her for what was coming down the pipeline, but through this education and your advocacy, just incredibly grateful that you were there to support her and that your impact is going to speak dividends on others' lives. So thank you for doing that work on behalf of the greater community.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Councilmember Remy. Councilmember White. All right. Well, then, I have one resolution, but before I read my resolution, just want to, this will be the first time, but we will continue to remind folks that, starting at the end of the week, is Black History Month, and council is really excited to host our Black History Celebration this year on February 16th at the Lincoln Theater. And so we would love to have the community come out, participate, as we honor and recognize folks in our community who have made impacts in terms of arts in our community as we celebrate Black History Month in Columbus. So more to come as we spread the word, and announce who our Jane Preston Poindexter Award winners are very soon, so thank you. I have the honor of presenting a resolution to a friend, a family, someone who has done so much in our community, for our city. I'm going to read a resolution commending Brenda Fields for her distinguished career to celebrate her retirement from the city of Columbus. Brenda, will you come forward? So we are here to honor the retirement of Ms. Brenda Fields, who has worked for over thirty years for the city of Columbus. She served as education program supervisor with the city's Capital Kids Program. She has been involved on numerous boards, committees, and organizations, including after-school accounts, United Way, Columbus City Schools, the Ohio State University, the United Negro College Fund Walkathon, and the Epilepsy Foundation. She's also been a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta sorority incorporated and a motivational speaker throughout her career. Anybody who knows Ms. Brenda knows that the kids are her passion, that she didn't do it for a paycheck all those thirty years, but she did it for the kids, specifically on the west side of Columbus, who made it to her center. And every time that we would go over there, it was, "Ms. B, Ms. B, Ms. B." She had a, she, in over thirty years, you get to see families come through the center, and you gave that to our community, and so on behalf of a grateful community, we couldn't let you just retire without this type of recognition for all that you've done for our young people in this city. So thank you so much. Are there any comments from my colleagues before I turn it over to Ms. B, Brenda? I don't know if Director wants to say anything.
Thank you, President Harden, other council members. Ms. B, what can you say about a woman who keeps so many young people in check? And I literally say that, but when you're known at the school as well as in the community and amongst your peers, that means a lot. I think when you, your last day, I was not in town, but very, very grateful for this moment. It's very appreciative when someone works a length of period, especially with young people. So from recreation and parks, we say thank you from this community. We say thank you. We know that we can't replace you, but we'll look for someone else that spends a little time, because you spend much, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, then, I'm going to turn the podium over to you, Ms. B.
Just take care of the babies, y'all. They need you. They need you. They need you. It's not my child, not my problem, because there are problems. They need you. You are the difference. And yes or no, you are the difference to save a life. Your words, your kindness, just one time, just one time, will save a life. Education, education, I'm obsessed with it. These kids mean the world to me. Their families mean the world to me. If you want to be a legacy, be the difference in their life, and believe me, somebody's watching you, and they will remember what you did, and they will remember what you said, and they will remember your kindness, and they will also remember your toughness, because Ms. B did not play, but I gave them a whole lot of love. Be the difference. Just love on them, that's all I can ask you, because God's not through with me yet, because I still got some more to do, but God's not through. Be the difference. These babies need you, please, please, need these babies. Thank you so much.
It is so, yes, Councilmember.
I just wanted to say, we have not had the pleasure, but your reputation precedes you, and I think that it's very telling that on the day when you're here for us to honor you, all of your words just centered around what has been your legacy and leaving us with, in Spanish, there's a term called consejos. This is like the wisdom that I have to bestow upon you, and the consejo you're leaving us with today is a word about how we need to continue to take care of our young people. And so I think that's a true testament to your career, to your life's work, and certainly, I know that it's not over, but thank you for sharing that with us today, and thank you for that reminder, and thank you for your service to our community and for all the people of you have poured into. The garden of hope, the garden of prosperity, the garden of something else is something that we continue to sow together as a community, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
With that, I move for adoption. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
All right. Are there any comments from our elected officials, auditor, city attorney's office, treasurer? At this time, I request the following ordinance to be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. In the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 0269-2024. Are there any other requests by members of council to remove a ordinance or a resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation by the clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any speakers on the, we don't have any speakers on the first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. I apologize. Will the clerk now read to the record ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation?
Finance and Governance Committee, ordinance is 162, 226, 236, 251-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 126 and 132-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 260-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance is 115, 125, 136, 155, 157, and 165-2024. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 266 and 284-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of expression, 14X, 16X, 17X, 13X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee, ordinance is 18, 118, 186, and 319-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance is, excuse me, one ordinance, 154-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 91, 149, 179, 201, 258-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 127, 129, 148-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinance is 3 and 198-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinance is 200 and 216-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance is 284 and 206-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance is 117 and 189-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance is 65, 72, 77, 134, 138, 139, 153-2024. And the Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointments 175-2023 and numbers 28, 29, 30, and 38-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve of these items? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Consent agenda items are passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to jump to page six of the agenda to read an ordinance in the Finance and Governance Committee this evening. Tonight is the Finance and Governance Committee for second read. We have ordinance 0269-2024 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to release public airport use restrictions on three parcels of real property at John Glenn Columbus International Airport and to declare an emergency. At this time, I would move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll have my committee's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance today in Public Service and Transportation, excuse me, ordinance 3556-2023 to authorize the transfer of funds between the Northwest Corridor Pay as We Grow Fund and the Northeast Corridor Pay as We Grow Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Northeast Corridor Pay as We Grow Fund, to appropriate funds within the Northwest Corridor Pay as We Grow Fund, and Northeast Corridor Pay as We Grow Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract modification with American Structure Point in connection with the ASR Hamilton Road from State Route 161 to Central College Road project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,400,000 from the Northeast Corridor Pay as We Grow Fund for the project. So the intent of this contract is to provide the city of Columbus with traffic analysis, preliminary engineering documents, and detailed design plans for improvement, which will include reconstruction and widening of the road, additionally, the installation of new curb, sidewalks, shared-use path, storm sewer, street lighting, street trees, and traffic signals along Hamilton Road from 161 to Central College Road. Improvements also include modifications to the eastern interchange ramps at 161, capacity improvements to Hamilton Road through the interchange, and installation of pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the east Dublin-Gramville Road intersection. So I just wanted to take a moment, because we've read a couple pieces of legislation along the Hamilton Road corridor, so I just wanted to hand it over to Deputy Director Born Tregger. Can you just give us an update on Hamilton Road, because this project is actually going from north to east and in various phases, so could you just give us what folks can expect?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Harden, and Chair Barrosa de Padilla, members of council. As you know, we've had several projects that could be considered one big project along Hamilton. This should be the third and final piece of that completion. We are adding a variety of safety and Vision Zero additions to the roadway to make it safer and better for all users and separating road users as well. This will be to the final design modification. That should be able to bring this into completion and construction at some point in the future as we look for a variety of different funds to complete the project, but we're very excited about it and think it's going to be an additive benefit for the community.
Thank you, Assistant Director. I just wanted to highlight it for folks, because I think as we continue to give these pieces of legislation, you know, they're timed out differently, people are seeing the effects on the roads as they're experiencing them. We have a couple other projects that are still, like, in play, so I just wanted to make sure if folks had questions, they could understand, they could understand the work that's being done. We are still in the design phase of the northern portion of Hamilton Road, have done the eastern portion of Hamilton Road, and I'm excited that for all of these projects, we've added in shared-use paths, we've added in sidewalks, ADA ramps, et cetera, to again ensure that our folks are safe, no matter how they're traveling our city streets and sidewalks, so thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Ocauara, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dealkar. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, we have ordinance 130-2024 to authorize the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department to apply for grant funding for the Federal Highway Administration RAISE Grant Program for construction of the Linden Green Line Linear Park and to declare an emergency. The rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, or RAISE, grant program, is accepting applications for funding to implement critical transportation infrastructure improvements and community connectivity projects. If awarded, this RAISE grant funding will be used to construct a portion of the Linden Green Line Linear Park. I wanted to take a couple minutes this evening to talk about this project, since this is the first time it has come across this new council. In October 23, the department acquired seven miles of an abandoned rail corridor in the Linden area with the intention of building a one-of-its-kind, fifty-eight-acre linear park in one of the region's most underserved areas for parks and natural areas, the Linden Green Line. Here to talk more about this amazing project and the timeline for funding and implementation, we have Brad Westall, Project Manager for the department. Brad, the floor is yours, and it's our turn to have show and tell. We've got videos and pictures.
We have show and tell. Good evening, council. Brad Westall, Planning Manager of Recreation and Parks. It's nice to be with you to talk for a few moments about a project that's going to mean a lot for Columbus, but especially the Linden community. The Linden Green Line project is a rail corridor that has lied obscurely derelict for many, many years, runs right through the heart, basically, along the Cleveland and Westerville Road corridors, and we're presenting us a little tour here for you, right? This is show and tell. I'll take you on a tour as our Google Earth flies north on the line. You can see it distinctly in the middle of your You can see it distinctly in the middle of your screen right there. As it goes along, it passes by nineteen schools. There's the Linden STEM Academy. It passes by many churches, cultural hubs. There it goes past Westerville Road. It's moving right along. If only we could ride our bike or walk this at this speed, we would be tremendously good shape. Again, the corridor continues north. You're going to see a little turn. There's Cleveland 3C Highway. We go over Ennis Road, right? Still going. We're at mile five. You haven't reached it yet. And then we cross Morse Road, and we turn slightly east as we get to a well-known project we're working on called the Kilborn Run Sports Park there on your left. Yes, it goes right through the heart of that developing park as we get ready to construct that. Monerva Park on your left, again, Westerville Road on your right. We go under Route 161, which is a very handy piece of infrastructure already built and in place. And then we end at Cooper Road at the Allen Creek Trail on a park that's also a large sports complex in the north. So you just went seven miles in about one minute right there. You've set the record on that. Basically, in your handouts, here's what you're going to read. When that rail corridor was abandoned 35 years ago, Recreation and Parks and the city didn't really have their hands on this. If you take seven miles long and you times it by 80 feet wide, you come up with 58 acres. In an area that has very few parks, this matters because this linear park will not be done as a block in the middle of a built-out inner-city neighborhood. It will become their linear park, not just a pathway. It will have small amenities that we'll strategically put along there, don't have fully designed out yet, things that could include small play spaces, family shelters, and a basketball court or two. Certainly connectivity back and forth at over 40 access points that we know of right now. Forty. That's one approximately every two blocks. That kind of access makes for 131,000 people to have a chance to enjoy something that right now they have nothing at all to be there. As we're developing this, we need money. We're here to ask you tonight to support a grant application to the federal government for it. That's the U.S. Department of Transportation. That ask is critical to have construction funds to do this. One year ago, almost to the day, this council passed a resolution to acquire this property. And now, here a year later, we come to ask your support to move ahead with federal funding. And thank you very much. I know I've left out a lot of bits and pieces of this, but you can ask us and Director Reese any questions that you wish. We're here to entertain any comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brad. I am so excited about this project because in addition to being an amazing addition to our park system, this project will play an important role in expanding mobility opportunities for our citizens, connecting multiple neighborhoods and communities on the east and northeast side of the city. So fingers crossed that our friends in the federal government also see the life-changing value of this project and help us out. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Guest Nick?
I just want to, I don't want to belabor, but I just want to point out how amazing this is. And also want to commend Brad and Recreation and Parks. And I think what most folks don't realize is that at the center of some of our largest economic development, neighborhood transformation projects, it's been Wrecking Parks. It's been Brad and the folks like you that think innovatively to think about how do we not just see parks as an amenity, but truly as a part of our economic development strategy for our neighborhoods. But in particular, this project, I think that one of my proudest moments in my public service career is not even sitting in this dais. It was working with residents in Linden. And I see Ms. Peg here from the South Linden Area Commission. I always want to shout her out. But this was a big piece of that. And one of the pillars of the One Linden Plan is to connect the community. Because Linden in itself and where it sits geographically, although strategic, is also excluded from a lot of other parts of our city. And so, one, naming this the Linden Green Mile, even though it goes through so many other neighborhoods, I think reinforces the city's commitment that Linden is a part of the landscape of this city, but also the heartbeat of this city. And so I'm so excited of what this is going to do, not only as far as the great uniqueness of it, that we have not seen this in our city, but how it's going to really unlock, I think, the potential and opportunity for a neighborhood like Linden and so many others along it. So thank you all again for this. I'm looking forward to it. And I'm going to call Congresswoman Beatty myself and ask her to help lobby for this money. Because one thing that we like more at council than passing dollars for transformative projects is we like free money. So we will absolutely take this up, and I'm proud to support this.
And I just, yes, to everything Councilmember Banksen just said, but also, I mean, anytime that we can give people space to be outside, especially a lot, first of all, seven miles is really long.
It's fabulous for it to be that long.
Yes, and it's like going through the center of the community, but also that people can do it safely, that it's providing green spaces for young people, that it's providing people an opportunity to exercise, to be outside. And I think taking this in the center of the communities, that this was space that wouldn't otherwise be used, and that we're using it for good, is just amazing. And anytime that we can put people safely on a bike or on a scooter, or that they can walk with their families and they can be outside, is always, always a good thing, especially for this stretch of the community, the way that we were innovative about using land. So congratulations to you and to the department. I'm just speaking it into existence. I'm very excited about this. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for the show and tell. I'm always down for the show and tell.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one question from me, actually. Are there any lights or other sort of infrastructure that are planned along the seven-mile stretch?
Yes, to all of that. We were strategically looking at lighting, access points, again, roadway crossings. We cross almost 10 major streets there, which would, I showed you Morse Road and Agler and all of that. So we have a lot of what I'd call enhanced safety crossings that we need to do. And you know what? There's not always sidewalks in touching this green line within 300 or 400 feet either direction. That's going to be really important, too. So yes, the amenities are highest on the list.
If there are no other questions, then I move for passage.
Banksen, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcarr, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Brad. And
Thank you very much, council.
That's all we have for my committee this evening.
Thank you. The next, thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee chaired by President Protam. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. And we have ordinance 0182-2024 to authorize the Exec Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter into a nonprofit service contract with Future Ready Five to implement a comprehensive prenatal-to-age-five strategy for activities related to achievement of the mayor's goal that every child in Columbus is ready for kindergarten, and to authorize expenditure of $400,000 from the general fund. To meet this goal of having every child in Columbus be ready for kindergarten, the city has worked in partnership with organizations like Future Ready Five that are well positioned to assist the city with this effort. Future Ready Five is a nonprofit organization focused on supporting prenatal-to-five approach to education to ensure the success of all of our children in the city of Columbus. This organization was selected due to prior experience and success in providing the same services in 2023. And I'd like to turn the floor over to the Office of Education Director, Matt Smido, to say a few words about this contract and sort of where we're at in sort of this process, and invite the CEO of Future Ready Five, Mario Borassa, to the podium as well to share remarks. Director?
President Protam Dorans, President Harden, members of council, thank you for your consideration of this ordinance this evening. As you mentioned, Future Ready Five is our partner in making sure all kids in Franklin County are ready for kindergarten. A little bit ago, Ms. B challenged us all to take care of our kids, to take care of our babies. That's exactly Future Ready Five's mission. And I hope Ms. B is still here to hear their presentation because we also have show and tell. I don't know if Mario can go seven miles in a minute, but he'll try.
Thank you, Director.
We'll see.
And Mario, you want to introduce your colleague as well?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, President Protam Dorans, President Harden, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I want to introduce my colleague here today. This is Nita Agrewal. She is our Vice President of Advancement and Community Relations. So we're just going to share a little bit about our organization if we can with you today and what we're working on, and hopefully have some time, if you'd like, to ask us questions. We'll certainly love to do that. So it's a great opportunity for us. I don't know that we've ever had the opportunity to do this with the council, so we're really happy to be here. I just want to start by just telling you a little bit about who we are and what we're about. So our passion-driven mission and what we wake up every day excited about is making sure kids are ready for kindergarten. And so in our work, at the core of it is about building systems, elevating early childhood education, and inspiring advocacy. And that is, those are really the three bullet points we are working on in the next year or two as we go forward. So just a quick share of our board members. As you can see here, the mayor is a member of our board, and we're excited that there's some membership from the city there representing your interests and the interests of the people of Columbus. And so we're excited about that. Just a quick word about the kindergarten readiness crisis. I imagine all of you already know this, but I do think it's important to level set a little bit. And the first thing that I think is important, this is real data, the most recent data we have as a city here, which is 65% of our residents in the county are not ready for kindergarten currently. 78% of our black children in the county are not currently ready for kindergarten. 85% of our Latino children in Franklin County are not ready for kindergarten. And the number is very similar for our new American families that move into this community as well. Needless to say, we have a significant crisis. And so that is really what we wake up every day at Future Ready to tackle. I want to talk about our solution. So we kind of believe in starting with each individual child first and their individual personal needs. And so to that end, our action plan is about building a learning ecosystem where largely one doesn't exist right now in the zero-to-five space that supports each individual child and coordinates their work across the sector. And what that looks like is a couple different things. So I want to kind of talk about what building that means for us. So the first thing we are working on, and we actually have already accomplished this, we're excited about this, is we have established universal early learning assessments. And so we've gone with two major assessments. One's targeted toward literacy that NCH also uses, which is great, and the other one that's more comprehensive for zero-to-five. And we can give these assessments to every child age zero-to-five within the county ultimately that matches up with standards that ultimately match up what they're going to be measured on in the kindergarten readiness assessment. So we have that part done. The second step, which is in progress right now, is building a collaborative software system. So we are working with SureImpact to build a system that doesn't just get us on the data entry side, but more importantly, gets us also on the referral side. Right now, there are systems in Columbus that are great data entry systems or great referral systems, but we don't know of any that exist that have both the entry and the referral process. So we are working hard on that as we speak right now with SureImpact to build that system. The third step is that we are providing each family with a proven and personalized literacy support. So once we have the results of the assessments, ultimately, what we're able to do is on an individual basis, work with families and children throughout the city and the community to identify the needs, prescribe interventions to help that child be successful, and to help them get ready for kindergarten. And the beauty of this is, this is zero-to-five. So right now, we don't know how all of our children are in terms of their readiness until they enter kindergarten. And if you look at a lot of the research, it suggests that 90% of the human brain is largely developed by the age of five. And if we're not getting any real take on how our kids are doing until they're five, the truth is, we are already way behind. And so we think bringing awareness and data to this issue will, that's a major step for us in the right direction. And then the second big step, you can't just stop there, is going to be actually acting to ensure that kids are learning at higher levels. And then we'll follow up after the interventions happen to make sure that they're actually working. And my hope is that in six months or a year, I can come back and talk to you and show you the data, and show you exactly what interventions are working, what interventions are not working, and how we can continue to progress this work over time. Now, I know what you're thinking. To do this with the 80, 70,000 kids in the zero-to-five space within this county is a monumental task. And so we do understand we have to build small and grow from there. So we are starting with a small pilot system here to build this system up with a small group of folks working in our preschools and a few community agencies, and ultimately build it from there so we can grow it over time. And that's going to be in in five weeks. So our first assessment starts in March, and we're really excited about that work. The last thing I want to share with you that we're working on also is that we have a partnership with Franklin County Rise. And so our work this year, we are the organization that is facilitating that work for the county on behalf of the county. And this year, we are offering 600-plus scholarships and up to $21,000 award for Step Up to Quality Movement. So previous years, the award was not as great, and I think we struggled a little bit to get movement on that in the way we wanted to. So that was a significant change we made. This year, with Franklin County Rise, the other thing that I think is important to note is, is the big theme is movement. So instead of awarding folks for being, you know, a certain star quality, we're saying you're going to get awarded if you move from one star to the next. And then we're rewarding also for new PSCC contracts and those who are open for non-traditional hours. That's really all I had to share. I have a lot more I could share, but we tried to nail it down. Some of you may have seen my presentation of 36 slides, but I assure you, that's just in case you have other questions, and I can kind of go to those slides and check them out. But I want to end by just saying thank you. This partnership between the city of Columbus and Future Ready Five has been significant. It's been a long partnership, and you all have hung with our organization for a long time, believing in what we can do. And I'm very excited to tell you that we are in the process right now of making some serious movement in this work. And I will promise that when we come back, you will have hard data on what interventions work with kids and what don't in our city with our children, and we will be moving that work forward, and it's going to be very exciting for us. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions you all might have.
Any questions or comments from councilmembers?
Actually, I'd like to offer a comment. I used to pastor a church that had an early childhood education program that we had run for over 20 years. A decade ago, we were having conversations about the need for this very thing, and nobody could pull all that together. So it's exciting that after all this time, we have a team of people who's seeing those different elements and trying to pull them all together because this is desperately needed. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any other, Councilmember?
Yeah, just one quick question. My one question was around, so first of all, thank you for being here today, and thank you for, the 36 slides was the seven-mile version. We took the, we took the quick route. We took the drone over that seven miles. But my question is just around, when we looked at the, at the numbers of children and how far they're behind, especially thinking about new and emerging communities with immigrants, migrants, and refugees, can you just very quickly just put a fine point on what does the outreach look like for them? Because obviously, there's different strategies, there could potentially be language barriers, et cetera. How are we accounting for that when we are doing the assessments?
So one of the, I'm sorry, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, I apologize. So one of the things that we are trying to work on right now is we are, we're working closely with organizations that are connecting to those communities. So we recently built an interesting connection with Festa, who does some great work within this community. And so that's an organization that we're connecting with right away, and we're hoping that they're going to be one of these pilot sites that we work with right off the bat, and Nita's, and lots of conversation with them about that. In addition, we're in the process of hiring three staff members for our Rise program, and we are really doggedly determined to ensure one of them is bilingual and speaks specifically Spanish so that we can connect with that population. We know that's our largest second language here within the community, and it's going to be super important. There are many preschools that we work with now that the primary language is Spanish in that school, and a few where the primary language of the staff is Spanish within that school. And so we believe if we're going to make a difference in, especially in the Latino community and the immigrant community in general, we need to really meet them where they are, and that to me is critical. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just, thank you so much, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. I want to add, not only is language part of it, but making sure that our interventions are culturally appropriate and they are meaningful. So we don't know exactly what that looks like, but we have some strong commitments from a couple of organizations, also the Ethiopian Taiwanda Social Services, who have been looking for this type of connection. And so although we know that translation is not the only thing that we can do, because that does, that may not mean it, but we're looking to make sure that our interventions are meaningful and culturally appropriate. Thank you.
And one more piece, I think. So we have ECAC, our council, and we have a core group, which is Council on Racial Equity, and a data oversight council. We are also ensuring that those groups all have a much more diverse representation of this community. In fact, we are adding members from throughout our community to make it really representative of the people. So we've done, I think, a pretty good job. Nita's actually in charge of that over the past two months, and so that's making a change, and that representation, I think, exists now in a way that maybe it hasn't before as much.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to elevate that because I think that that nuance is critically important because I think with some of the efforts that we've tried in the past, we haven't necessarily baked that in. And so we know that we're leaving children and families behind unless we take a very intentional approach. So I appreciate you answering that question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question or comments from councilmembers? Well, thank you both for being here. I look forward to, again, continuing this discussion as more of the data comes in. I just want to say, sincerely appreciate when we're talking about taking a very specific approach to the children that will be impacted by this, rather than, it's really easy in education to have a one-size-fits-all solution for every child, for every neighborhood, for every zip code. This is the opposite of that, trying to be very targeted towards, you know, those individual children. And I think that's something that we're hopeful will be, you know, bear the fruit of, you know, everyone's work on this. So thank you for the work and thank you for being here tonight. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favorite Green Remy Weich President Harden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Presidents. All I have my committees this evening.
Next committee to come before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have one ordinance in second reading. It is ordinance number 0108-2024 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with the Ohio State University Physicians, Inc., for physician services for the Columbus Public Health Clinics for the period of February 1, 2024 through January 31, 2025, to waive competitive bidding requirements to authorize the expenditure of $62,400 from the Health Special Revenue Fund to pay the costs thereof and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health has a need to provide specialized physician services in order to effectively manage and meet the needs of their patients. This contract enables CPH to provide board-certified infectious disease physician services across all divisions. This specialized physician handles over 10,000 site visits annually and provides expert consultation for infectious disease, maternal-child health, and emergency preparedness and outbreak response. Not only does this provider collaborate with other practitioners at CPH, but they also serve as a technical resource and a community liaison, assisting with policy development, planning, and other coordination of services. In the absence of the Health Commissioner, the physician would serve as Acting Medical Director and the department spokesperson. I don't have any show and tell to go along with this ordinance, but do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favorite Green Remy Weich President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That is all we have in this committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight I have two ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The first ordinance is 168-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into a contract with UKG Chronos Systems for the Division of Fire for subscription software maintenance, support for telestaff, automated staffing software, and web staff subscription services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $153,840 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Hollering, could you please speak to the waiver of competitive bidding?
Thank you, President Harden. Chair Remy, this service is a web-based software solution that's designed specifically to help the Division of Fire manage its complex staffing assignments. Waiver is necessary here because the vendor is the proprietary owner of its contents, and there's no other vendor that can provide these services for the division.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favorite Green Remy Weich President Harden.
Next, I have ordinance 169-2024 to authorize the Public Safety Director to enter into a contract with Target Solutions Learning LLC for computer-based distance learning services for the Division of Fire, to authorize the expenditure of $175,648 from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. The Fire Division's distance learning project was implemented to provide remote training in all fire stations via computer network. A computer-based training content provider is used to continue to provide and implement training, scheduling, and logging of employee training history as Columbus Fire contracts with Target Solutions Learning LLC to deliver online fire and EMS continuing education under the parent company Vector Learning. Deputy Director Hollering, could you please speak to the waiver of competitive bidding on this particular piece of legislation?
Yes, thank you, President Harden. Chair Remy, the Division of Fire successfully implemented this specialized fire training software with Target Solutions over a period of time. Target Solutions is the proprietary owner of the contents on this web-based solution, and it's not seeking to currently replace this longstanding relationship.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favorite Green Remy Weich President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee to come before council is the Public Utility and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember Weich. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, we have one ordinance coming before council, and it's ordinance 0133-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to establish a purchase order to make payments to Delaware County for sewer services provided during fiscal year 2024, and to authorize the expenditure of $4,400,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund. This agreement has been in place since 1991 and helps the city avoid costly and duplicative wastewater treatment systems for parts of Columbus.